Sustainability Committee and Friends of the Cottage Grove Library. So if people come in for the open house, if you can then give them a flyer and say, "Here, go to the Earth Day event," that would be great.
All right, super. All right, then we'll move right to Tourism Commission. That's either Troy or Melissa.
I was gonna let Erin do it unless Troy wants to.
I'm going to have Erin run with it. He does a great job.
All right.
You ready, Erin? I'm putting you on the spot.
I'm not.
No pressure, no pressure, Erin.
I'm digging out those notes.
The agenda's opening. We had a guest from the Nuclearist Chamber of Commerce who has a lot of experience doing these tourism-type activities, working with their Tourism Commission. So we kinda got her advice and got to pick her brain a little bit, which was great. Becca Stoffaker was her name, so thank you to her for coming. We had a little bit of updated financial information from the hotel. And for our future agenda items, we're gonna work on kind of a list of things that we would want the Chamber to do, assuming they come onboard as our tourism entity, which they seem interested in doing.
Do we have any funds yet? And did we get any tourism dollars yet?
Not yet.
Yeah, Lish and I are kinda coordinating on that this week.
Do we have a sense of how much we're expecting?
We did. I don't have the number in front of me. It was...
About forty-seven thousand for 2021. Twenty-twenty-two is what they're expecting. But they didn't have the number for last year for the two months.
Thank you.
Are those funds earmarked for anything?
Tourism.
Well, this side. Thank you. Are there... So help me understand that you have forty-seven thousand. Like, how can we use that, right? Because I'm just thinking from a CDA perspective, right? Like, there's marketing and there's a lot of tourism involved in the CDA as well. So I'm just curious where, like, is it earmarked? Is it just surplus? Like, what are we doing with those funds?
Seventy percent are earmarked to be spent directly on tourism per the Tourism Committee, that the Tourism Commission will decide on how those seventy percent of the revenues are spent. And the other thirty percent is undesignated for the village to use. But for the first, I believe, ten years that the hotel is open, that was part of an incentive for the new hotel is to return that thirty percent to them to use to, you know, make sure they have a good start on their first decade in business. But then after that, it could be... It's undesignated for the village's use, however we see fit.
All right. Moving then to Ad Hoc Sustainability Committee. Heidi, I'll turn it over to you. You need that one.
All right. So we met on April 12th. First, we talked about the solar RFP update. We approved the solar panels for the municipal building in the 2022 budget. And Strands working on preparing that. I think it was close to being released. I'm not sure if it's... Has it been posted yet? No, soon. Be posted soon. We also talked about the B-cycle dock placement, which was also approved in the 2022 budget. However, Trek is not accepting orders for B-cycle stations for this year. So we talked a lot about bicycle paths in general, where these might be located strategically throughout the village to increase connectivity and what types of users would be using them, maybe family visiting or tourists staying at the hotel. Or people just driving in for the day, maybe using the state trail or Bocken Park, riding on our paths. So I think that conversation will then continue and we'll talk more about bike paths in general as part of that plan and kind of establish the support to have a successful B-cycle program here. Hopefully next year if they get... If Trek can fulfill an order next year. We talked about No Mow May, which I'll come back to in a moment. And we talked about the Earth Day event this weekend that we've been working with the Friends of the Library on. They have a master composter coming to do some demonstrations and a master naturalist giving tours in the school forest and prairie. So then there'll be a story walk in there. And our portion, we helped coordinate the Trash Lab, the Dane County Trash Lab, and they have... They worked with the Children's Museum, Dane County Waste and Renewables, to build this educational trailer that'll be parked in the parking lot there. And we actually have the Director of Waste and Renewables that will be volunteering there, educating the public about life cycle of trash. And we have our compost bins and rain barrel sale, which we should have some extras to purchase on the day of, or anyone that had a pre-order should be able to pick up that day also.
What day is that again, Heidi?
That's on Saturday.
This coming?
This coming Saturday. Yep, the day after Earth Day, from 10 until 1. So yeah, you could swing by the open house.
Get a donut?
Hop on over there. Could ride your bike to both of them.
Supposed to be seventy degrees.
Leave it when I see it. So then we can go back to No Mow May because I put it on for a discussion since it had come as a referral from Melissa to have us talk about that. And you may have heard about this, actually, it was in the New York Times, NPR Today, about how communities in Wisconsin are adopting a No Mow May to help support pollinators because their food is limited during the early part of the season. So we discussed different ways to support pollinators, more in general, throughout the whole growing season. So the Sustainability Committee discussed that this is kind of a one-month thing that people... Some people choose to do. And they wanted to go route of educating people about pollinators throughout the whole year. So that was kind of the recommendation from the Sustainability Committee to not go the route of No Mow May, but to do this broader educational piece. But I thought it was worth the conversation since May was coming up and it was something that was brought forward from Melissa. A lot of other communities in our area do it. It would kind of involve suspending the ordinance because we have a weed ordinance. People aren't supposed to let their lawns go wild through May. So I wanted to open that up for a discussion with the board on, you know, what if we wanted to go with Sustainability Committee's recommendation or if we want to move forward with No Mow May.
How does that work with covenants, subdivision covenants, when they... Because we have an ordinance, but then subdivision covenants also require you to... So I'm rocking a hard place. I'm just curious. I don't know if there's an answer or not.
An answer.
Your restrictive covenants would control, like, if there's no ordinance in place, your restrictive covenants would still control, but it'd be up to the HOA to enforce those. So that's how you'd get in trouble with your HOA board.
I'll just... I just wanted to say that I think this is a great way for us to talk about this in our community and show people a way to start to have a greater conversation about pollinators and things that we can do in our own yards and community. So after May of not mowing your yard, then people may think about setting up a pollinator garden when they see all the different types of bees that are in their yard during the month of May. You can set up a pollinator garden, rain garden, or butterfly garden, or there's, I guess you could have a wildflower meadow as well, which I only learned about this by, I think I heard about it in 2020 when Appleton first did it. And it apparently started in the United Kingdom, though. And since then, last year, about a dozen communities in Wisconsin participated and it's spreading to other states around us as well. Researchers found that lawns that didn't mow in May housed five times the number of endangered bees and three times as many bee species as lawns that didn't participate. So there's also the pesticide aspect of it and saving those from going into our environment. And it saves the environment a little bit as far as gas to mow your lawns, too. So JJ, I did have a question, since you're... What's your official title with the weeds?
Weed Commissioner.
Weed Commissioner. How many tickets or warnings or whatever Weed Commissioner does in May do you usually tend to give out?
In May?
Yeah.
It's probably just a couple. Yeah, it's usually not much.
Are they tickets or warnings or how does that work?
It's a warning to mow the lawn with a timeframe given, and then if not, we get it taken care of and they get a bill.
So it could also save our sap some time, too, by not mowing.
Yep.
The one thing I would add, it's because JJ is the Weed Commissioner, state law does require after May 15th to destroy all noxious weeds. So that's something we don't have any flexibility on. If there are noxious weeds, the landowner by state law has to destroy them.
What's an actious weed?
I think it's defined by administrative code. JJ, do you know?
There's a list I just referenced because we have certain folks that will call in as soon as they see, like, what I call it, just the common thistle is one. So certain neighbors are watching very closely and we'll get those occasionally on an actious weed one. So there's a list. I just can't remember right now.
Must be seats prepped on there, too.
You have pictures of the weeds? Like, how do you know? I'm bad at plants.
That's the only one. It's been the... Is it the Canadian thistle? Whatever that one is, is all it's... The only noxious weed one I've ever had. The only other Weed Commissioner duties have been the lawn over 12 inches. So, which, if you've just had a healthy lawn with no noxious weeds in it and we went with No Mow May, that's okay. Probably be tough, but...
There's nothing saying that somebody couldn't mow it, like, in the middle of the lawn, too? If they wanted. Maybe it was all of those. So I guess I'm just putting out there that I am in support of No Mow May. I think it's a good start. It can start the conversation. It can help us to expand on it then come June when... Or even throughout the month of May with Facebook posts and information about it and just get the conversation started a little. And then, I mean, I don't know how many people may or may not participate, but I think it's good to just raise a little bit of awareness about it and see how it goes.
Others on the board have thoughts?
Do you think we could get yard signs, like with the leaves, keeping your leaves out of the gutter? So that people know why someone's yard might look a little unruly?
I asked JJ about that this morning. I don't know if he had a chance to look into it.
I did. I'm sure we can. Got a little time. I've never gotten signs like that, so I did not have a chance to find a company, but that can't be that hard. I'll reach out to the folks who make our Leaf Free Street signs for the county or, I mean, I can find a contact. Shouldn't be too difficult.
On BCityUSA.org, there is a sign that you can print, but it's not... There is a nice No Mow.
The village of Shorewood Hills kind of started a template resolution and information for their residents. And I think they have a yard sign made. We could always reach out to them and see where it was printed, just use the same design. Maybe they could get, you know, connect us with someone.
JJ, there's all kinds of examples. Google, I'm sure, No Mow May. There's at least 10, maybe more.
And this is my own ignorance again, not knowing weeds well, but like, is it the dandelions? What is it? What is it that we're mowing that the bees need? Not the grass itself. It's... Right?
Well, the dandelions are part of it.
Right, that's what they need to feed on. But is there other?
I think I...
So are we sure the mowing's just the concern? I mean, this is a time of the year where a lot of people defatch, they aerate, and they put down, you know, their first application. You know, is there concern about that stuff or is it just specifically the mowing?
It's the mowing. It's the, I think, the main issue because you're cutting the food source from the bees.
But if you fertilize, you could also kill the pollinator as well. As I've researched, really, like, the pesticides, the fertilizers, like, you ultimately, like, we stopped fertilizing our lawn, right? Just because it was, you know, it's... Not only is it harmful for the insects, but it's also harmful for your animals, right? Like, I've had a few dogs pass away from cancer because of the fertilizers that we put on the lawn. It... Ultimately, you wanna, like, you want things that carry pollen for the bees to, you know, pollinate. So it's... But again, I think my only concern is the noxious weeds, right? And the state mandate. So I'm just wondering, like, by May 15th, we have to take care of these invasive species , but at the same time, we still want to take care of the bees. I just... I support this, but at the same time, it feels like a rock and a hard place on this one. But I think we should just give people the option to suspend the ordinance. If a covenant or a neighbor complains, just mow the lawn. I think it's pretty straightforward.
On the weed side, that might be something kind of on the edge of town. Like, my sister lives right next to the school property where it's open, undeveloped, next to Granite Ridge, and that's growing pretty wild. So just having eyes and ears and helping educate residents on what might be an actious weed might be helpful, too, at some point. You know, maybe as communications person on boards, stuff like that, because the best people that know are the ones there every day looking out there at their backyard to recognize what kind of weed might need removal. So that's that side of it, too.
And well, I'll learn about what noxious weeds look like. Right now, if we mow them all the time, you don't really have the opportunity.
JJ, isn't it wild parsnip? It's about the most...
See, I haven't had that one called in in my time here.
Really?
Which, just probably because people don't know, maybe, or I don't know.
Maybe they just haven't gotten a blister from it.
Yeah.
They know.
I mean, I've seen it on the trail. I've seen it in Cambridge, on the trail out there. So, I mean, like, I've seen it over by Granite Ridge. Like, I do see it, but I don't think it... I mean, I'm usually... I've had it pop up in my yard once and I've cut it down or pulled it with gloves, but I know bees, and Googling as we go here, right? Bees really like wild parsnip. So it's, again, rocking a hard place, right? Like, don't let your kids play in wild parsnip, but the bees won't like it. So I don't know what to say there, but yeah. Again, I support it. I just, I think there's some sticky points here to think about.
So I'm always a little bit slow.
Wisconsin has 130...
What's that?
Wisconsin has 130 different noxious weeds listed on the website. It should just stick out to me as the Canadian thistle and the garlic mustard.
So with this initiative, are we asking, is it consideration to our village residents? Are we highly recommending or are we...
Right now, it's just a discussion.
Okay. But I mean, so what is... What are we looking to do here? Is it... Would it be just to move it forward if we say we move it forward? Is it a recommendation or is it... Are we saying that we're gonna mandate No Mow?
No. No. You want to get a few people fired up, see, mandate anything.
Mandate anything, right?
You can have a few more friends.
Don't do this.
It's my last meeting tonight.
Don't stir up the pot, man.
Scrap that from the minutes.
I mean, the discussion of sustainability is really about how do we do this year-round in the best way. I think Melissa's rattled off several different ways. Is get folks to put in pollinator-type plants that will sustain the bees from, you know, as early as possible, the growing season, all the way till the end. And that's where our discussion was, sustainability, is we thought, you know, a month is not gonna do it. These bees need nourishment throughout, particularly as the season wanes and they need to, you know, get ready for that, for the cold winters. So that's where we were going with it. And then the other thing we touched on, which wasn't touched on a lot of articles, is this did create some friction between neighbors. And we, again, you want to... We want to add more fuel to that, you know, a couple neighbors that already have issues with one another. One could just say, "I'm gonna just not mow my lawn and see what happens to the folks next door." Just a word of caution for the board to consider because those situations did occur. And again, back to how do we create an environment throughout the community to sustain the bees the entire growing season, not just a month? So...
Those are all good points, John, but at this point, we don't even... We haven't done this before and there are other communities that have done it and gone through it. And like, Appleton continues to do No Mow May. So I think at this point, that it... I think it would be good to try it in our community.
So do we simply know that Appleton does this? Or have we talked to the municipality and asked them, "How's it going? You know, how did you launch it? I mean, I have... What kind of feedback did you get?" Or is it just simply that we know that they do it?
They do that and they've continued to do it then, and other communities have been doing it.
Yeah. But I guess my question is, have we actually talked to somebody about how successful their initiative is?
I have not.
I think that's probably something you would want to consider.
Well, I'm going to move to suspend our weed ordinance for the month of May so that people can participate in No Mow May.
So we just have a discussion item for tonight, but we could bring it up for the next meeting. And we can certainly evaluate, look at some language, I guess, for how we would go about that and just have a panel for the board.
Okay. The one thing, though, is like, on our agenda, it notes that any item is up for final action, is subject to final action.
Yeah, it gets tricky because we just put discuss on there, so playing it safe, I would say it would just be a discussion item tonight.
Luckily, our meeting's on May 2nd, right?
Yep.
So nobody mow on May 1st?
We may not have any grass by then, anyway. At this rate, the cold. All right, I'll note that for a future, just a future agenda item.
I was just looking at, there's a whole article in the Post Crescent, which is Appleton's newspaper, but property owners that want to participate in No Mow May can register with Paul Enabler's... Oh, Fox Cities. I didn't read the subversive sentence. But they would get a small yard flight if they registered. I was thinking of Wisconsin. Anyways, sounds good to me.
I'm not sure we, like, why we'd want to do anything other than encourage this if that's what we want to do. I don't know why we'd want to forego an ordinance that's already in place or anything else. I mean, people have the freedom to do it or they choose not to do it. Why is it more complicated than that?
Well, they don't if we have the weed ordinance in effect.
Yeah, but if they've got weeds in their yard, then you take care of whether they're mowing it or not.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's hard to hear what Troy's saying.
Troy, make sure we've got this correct. So essentially, you're saying, you know, if somebody, basically, someone feels the desire to not mow their lawn, they can do so and ignore the ordinance themselves personally. And whether or not someone complains to basically kick that ordinance into effect is really what it comes down to, because that's usually what happens with normal ordinances anyway because the staff is always fairly busy as it is and the complaint kicks up that need then to do it. Is that what you're saying?
For the most part, yeah. I'm not sure why this is... We're making it more complicated than it needs to be. We can encourage this. At the rate we're going, we won't be cutting our grass in May anyways.
True.
It snowed out today.
All right. We'll put it on next meeting's agenda, the Discuss and Consider. And we'll phrase it with Legal's input as far as sustaining the ordinance so it's properly posted, just to be on the up and up. Anything else on sustainability, Heidi?
Nope, but yes, it's the last meeting of that ad hoc committee.
All right. Moving then to Plant Commission. We have a couple Discuss and Consider items here that were covered by the Commission. So we'll start with first one, which was the Discuss and Consider from Bruce Beckham, approval for a certified survey map in the village extra territorial jurisdiction to create two parcels on 2080 Highway BB in the town of Cottage Grove. The Commission recommended approval, staff recommended approval on this. Erin, anything to add? Obviously, Bruce was at Plant Commission, but anything?
Yeah. It was unanimous at Plant Commission. We had no concerns about it. It's on the far eastern edge of our ETJ, just barely within our jurisdictions.
Any questions from board members regarding this one?
I move approval that we approve Bruce Beckham's request for approval of a certified survey map as presented in the staff report.
All right. All right. Thanks, Erin. Thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. The next Discuss and Consider that was reviewed by the Plant Commission was Discuss and Consider, a request from AJ Regali for a site plan amendment to add one new building at the Cottage Grove Storage Facility located at 429 Progress Drive. Again, this is just a... The Commission went over this. It's the last building available spot on that parcel. And Erin, add more clarity on that as well. We did have some conditions with this, with Plant Commission.
Yeah, so the last amendment to this was in 2019. They added a couple buildings then and then showed space for two more. Instead of doing that two, they're doing one with more space in between those last two buildings so they can back oak trailers and things into the building. You had more of a market demand for that than for anything else. It's not really changing the grading or the way the stormwater works or anything like that. There's actually less impervious surface because the paving is only on one side of the building, it's sort of wrapping all the way around. As far as the conditions, the submittal materials just showed kind of a plain metal on the street facade. We'd like that to match the other buildings that are there, which incorporates some masonry. Most of the other buildings have the pavement right up to the building. In this case, there's actually lawn in front of it, so we'd like to have the foundation landscaping that the ordinance would require there. Because this is the last phase, we'd just like to clean up any other landscaping that was waiting for the project to be completed. And I don't think they're planning any exterior lighting on the backside of the new building, which should be facing residential property. If they do, then we'd want to see a photometric plan that ensures they're complying with the ordinances there.
Any questions from Erin on this? And again, the Plant Commission approved this with conditions for a recommendation for the board.
I'll make a motion to approve it, conditions, a request from AJ Regali for a site plan amendment to add one new building at the Cottage Grove Storage Facility located at 429 Progress Drive.
Second.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Erin. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. The rest of the Commission agenda covered... So rest of the commission agenda covered, um, just, uh, a discussion on direction for staff regarding a potential zoning ordinance amendment related to animal breeding facilities. This is just to add further clarity. Erin, you want to touch in any, anything else on that?
Yes, something Heidi actually brought up to us. There were some examples locally in Mount Horeb and Spring Green where, um, there were some of these puppy mill type operations with huge numbers of dogs that both ended up with legal challenges because the municipalities didn't want them, but their, the ordinances they had in place kind of left them where they couldn't really do anything about it. So there are a few other municipalities that are passing similar ordinance amendments to this that limit the number of breeding dogs you can have at the facility. In this case, it would be two. This is kind of patterned after what, um, some period their ordinance is actually very similar to ours in a lot of regards. So we couldn't actually make the change because we just started discussing it, but we were, the direction from the plan commission was to kind of touch base with Larry and Rick and make sure what we're proposing is all cut and dried, then we'll have a hearing at the next meeting and get it approved.
Any questions, uh, from board members on that?
I just have a quick comment. Uh, thank you, Erin, for doing the research on that. I had received a few postcard communications from an organization, um, regarding ordinances like that. So, um, and also as former ordinance review, I think that, that, uh, worked really well to refer a question to the committee that covers the zoning code, um, and kind of have that area, discuss it rather than ordinance committee. And so I, I think that that flow is working well. Thank you.
Excited? With that then, we'll, there's no other questions. That was, it was a short meeting for a change. We'll move right then to reports from village officers. So start us off, Rick.
Uh, not too much. So we officially have legislative maps in Wisconsin. I'll be touching base with Lisa just to see if we need to change any wards. I'm not sure if the elections commission has the maps posted yet to see what the village looks like, if we have to do any ward changing, but I'll be in touch with Lisa. I know she's been off a few days, so we'll get that taken care of. And if we have to change wards, we'll bring something before you guys.
And nothing else?
Nothing else.
I did have a question there, right?
Sure.
Have there been any, any challenges yet to the new?
Not that I'm aware of anything being filed.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Then we'll move right to my little segment here. This is the active time of the year where we look for the reappointments or, uh, filling spots. So, uh, the list below here that I have for a number of the committees is a list of folks that said they want to continue on and they're doing, from my perspective, a good job. The only exception to that is Heidi's listed as well as Nick and Ryan for the sustainability or Public Works and Property Sustainability Committee. We're just moving, because it, that Public Works is expanding by two citizen members. We're bringing over, um, Nick and Ryan from Sustainability. They're, they're very excited about that. And because we removed ordinance from Heidi, um, I wanted to make sure she stayed busy on a, on a Tuesday evening, um, first part of the month. So I asked her if she would, uh, take this on and I will bow out of that, but I will be popping in because I continue to be excited about that particular committee, particularly around sustainability pieces. And then the rest are reappointments again for folks who continue to plug away at these committees. We will have, uh, we do have some openings on CDA, I know for sure. I haven't heard back from all the folks that I reached out to who do have terms coming up. So I have a feeling we'll have some, some new folks, uh, sent in, uh, next time, uh, for consideration for the board.
I'll move to approve the nominations, uh, from B1 to 7.
Second.
Motion second, thank you. Melissa, thank you. Well, then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Uh, we covered Chief's report already, so we'll move right on there. Lisa will do her magic and put it all back together, so it looks correct. Then we move right down to communication, Melissa's business. First up is the vouchers, uh, for consideration. Any questions, comments with the bills, vouchers as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Thanks, Troy. Thanks, Sarah. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Correspondence? I've heard from some residents, uh, about speed on Main Street down by 300 block. I spent, uh, so I've engaged with both Chief as well as JJ, and we're looking into some things there. There is a, our temporary sign is up for speed for the folks coming in to the village. Been down there a few times already. It was down there again when the kiddos got picked up this morning. And, um, I think I shared with a few of you before the meeting, as soon as folks heading out of town, make it through eight, the 1855, uh, little spot there where it's kind of congested, it's like shooting out of a cannon for some people. I don't know what that is. So we're going to continue to work on that with both enforcement as well as some longer term solutions for, for us, so we're talking about that. And we're going to put a new tool in, in place in the next couple of weeks to pick up some more data so we can work with that too and figure out what those long-term things are. But those, that's, I did have that, uh, correspondence. I also spoke with, uh, Chris Hampton today, uh, as well as had communication with him last week about the fire agreement. So we'll cover that in the closed session. And that's what I had. Anybody else have any correspondence? All right. We'll move then on to upcoming community events. I think we already covered Earth Day, which is very exciting, as well as the Housing Task Force, uh, items. Again, we want to, Earth Day down at Cottage Grove Schools. Are you guys going to be set up at Public Works as well or just Cottage Grove School?
Cottage Grove.
Okay. And that's for the pickup of rain barrels as well as compost bins and a lot of other exciting stuff, which was covered earlier when it comes to that. And the Housing Task Force, couple dates, Paul again, coming up.
Tuesday, Andrew.
Yes.
Thursday.
Thursday.
And that, I saw that posted on, on Facebook too as well, so that was good. Anything else that's coming up in the next few weeks or months?
Yeah, on April 30th at 9:00 AM, there's a McCarthy Park Youth Service Day. So you can email Lou Wood, L-U-W-O-O-D, at charter.net if you'd like to participate. And they'll have donuts there too and fruit and hot chocolate and coffee. Because you never know if there'll be snow or not. And lunch will be provided as well. So they'll be spreading bark, pulling weeds, trimming invasive species, spreading prairie seeds and planting trees.
Wonderful. Uh, and that's a, there's a plug for, for little ones on that one too, I think I saw on Facebook to bring them out to.
Yes.
Yeah. Cool. All right. Future agenda items, we have the no mow or something of that for consideration next month, the usual suspects. Matt, anything else that we might have?
Yes, either at the, one of the main meetings, we'll, we'll need authorization from the board to go out for a bond sale for our capital, our 2022 capital projects. And then our architects that did the facility study were planning to come back at the end of May, so we'd like to do that as a special board meeting to do tours of the facilities with the architects. So we'll, we can schedule that at the next board meeting.
And then just of note, tonight's officially, I think, Paul and Troy's last round of the board at least this round until they, they decide to come back. So I'd like to personally thank both of you for contributing to this body as well as all the other committees that you've been on, uh, representing the community. And then we'll be welcoming two new members, Brittany and Chris, uh, to the board, uh, at our next meeting. So, but tonight is about Paul and Troy. So thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, President Williams and everyone else.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving then on to our next item on agenda, uh, this would be for me to make the motion to go in closed session regarding negotiations for TID number 10. The village board, uh, will go enter in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses one, parentheses E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties or the investing of public funds.
John, I can, I can interrupt you, sorry, on this one. We can, we can skip, um.
This one?
Yeah, we can skip the, the first one, the, um, TID 10 negotiations regarding development assignments we do not need tonight. Correct, Rick?
Uh, that's correct. We don't have anything for tonight.
Okay.
But the second one regarding fire EMS agreements, we do.
You could have said that about two sentences.
Sorry.
That's all right. All right, then, uh, I don't, moving on to item 11, uh, again, a motion for the village to go, board to go into closed session. This, uh, closed session is to establish negotiation position regarding Deer Grove EMS as well as the joint fire agreements. The Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, uh, 19.85, parentheses one, parentheses E, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other, other specified public business work whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session is their second.
Second.
David? All right. With that, then Lisa, please roll call.
Alan?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Brad Cliff?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vanderwoldy?
Aye.
And William?
Aye. We are in closed session.
Can we turn the mics off for this? We turn the mic?